Alliger?
Here.
Mr. Krafcek?
Here.
Mr. Parsak?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape County Herald on January 6th, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll start today's work session with public safety.
Court Administrator?
Good afternoon.
Hi Debbie.
Court's going fine. Things are slowing down now that the summer is over. We do have one fun thing coming up this month. We are having the Stone Harbor kindergarten class come to visit on Friday, October 26th. Judge Birchmire is coming in to have a little talk with them as well. So if you see a bunch of little people wandering around, don't get upset.
That's excellent.
Anybody have any questions for the court?
Thank you, Debbie. Chief Stanford?
Good afternoon. This is the report for September for Fire and EMS. We had thirty-two fire calls for the month. That's an increase of ten from the previous year at the same time. And fifty-seven EMS calls, that's also an increase of ten from the previous year. Nothing too exciting. One multi-fire, elevator rescue, four natural gas leaks, five arcing wires, eighteen fire alarms, one carbon dioxide alarm, one severe weather standby. That's my report.
I asked Roger if he would. We had a meeting about the county dispatch this past week, Mantura and I, and Jill, and the police chief, and Roger, and JT was there. I asked Roger just to update counsel on the...
Just to recap of the meeting is that we met with Marty Palugi and Steve Long from the county requesting that we move our police department to county dispatch. It looks like we're a little late because he's taking on another town, which he's hoping to have it in by March. And then he doesn't want to do anything before the summer, so the earliest we will be able to get into is next fall.
So like a year from now?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it is progressing, shouldn't be difficult. The funding will be coming along, see how the funding works, and all is good.
Good.
So supposedly it'll be less expensive. I don't know how much less, but less expensive. And the police chief, or Roger, no one seemed to have any issues with what we need to do going forward. I guess we're pretty well set for it.
We're ready. We're ready to move tomorrow. I tried to get them to make it quicker, but he wouldn't commit to it, so.
And then it would be Avalon and Stone Harbor moving at once, I would assume? Or so we're going kind of as a unit? Okay.
As Marty said, it would be Starwood Avalon moving all at once, so.
That's good.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Chief Shutter?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The monthly report for the police department for the month of September, there were one-hundred-and-sixty-two motor vehicle stops and four adults were arrested. In terms of personnel, all but one SLEO two and the other SLEO ones have finished for the year. The remaining SLEO two will continue working until the end of November to supplement the loss of the officer that left for military training. We expect that officer, the full-time officer, to return from military training sometime in April of 2019. Our hiring of SLEO twos for the winter police academy training has been completed, and we expect to have four Class twos in the winter academy. And then as of January 1st, we'll begin the hiring process for the spring academy. Hopefully have that all buttoned up quickly. In terms of a building update, all seems to be on schedule as usual. The doors have been hung, the drop ceilings are installed, and resin floors in certain rooms were being put in today. I contacted our radio vendor today to schedule an appointment for the movement of the police radio wiring to an appropriate location. I'm just waiting to hear back from him. We have a communications meeting tomorrow with respect to phone lines and computer internet lines, things of that nature. And Captain Palmer and I attended a meeting this morning with the contractor, architect, and the door hardware vendor in terms of locks and keys and things like that. Otherwise, everything seems to be going fine. Sound like a broken record, but it really is really nice. We walk through probably twice a week, and it's really, really nice.
Great.
And that's my report. Oh, forgive me. On Monday, October 22nd, sometime in the morning, the BP, the South Jersey Gas Company is going to conduct a simulated BPU drill here in town. It'll be in the area of 96th Street Bridge. Nothing will be disrupted in terms of traffic, in terms of Stone Harbor Boulevard, but we will close down Sunset Drive from 95th to 96th Street. That's where the drill is going to take place. We'll have a command post in the municipal lot on the 300 block of 96th Street. Take probably about an hour from start to finish. So if you see commotion down in that area, it's just a drill. Middle Township PD, Middle Township Fire and Rescue, our police department, of course, Stone Harbor Fire and Rescue, and South Jersey Gas Personnel will all be involved.
What's a BPU?
Board of Public Utilities Drill. They're required, they reached out to us in the spring, late spring of this past year, and said they were required to conduct a drill for the BPU board. And they asked if they could do it here. Seemed fine to me. I thought it'd be good training for us. So it just progressed from there, and we just had our final meeting this afternoon before I came here, just to finalize everything for Monday. So sometime in the morning on Monday, the 22nd. Should all be over prior to noon.
So we had a public safety meeting on the 20th of September, and some of the things we talked about while the police chief's up here is the bicycles in the business district on the sidewalk. Enforcement has been stepped up. There were citations issued. But again, because of the changeover of people, week in and week out, it's like it's something you have to do week in and week out, so the way the crowd comes in. But it has been stepped up, and we have some new signs, I believe, in the business district for keep the bicycles off the sidewalk. Cameras, we talked about some cameras. It'll be maybe in the 2019 budget for the bridges and in the business district, and perhaps the school as well. I don't know if you've actually hammered out your...
The school has cameras inside right now. What we were looking at was various locations around town, the Borough Hall, the courtroom here, and that was pretty much it. All in all, there was about seventeen to nineteen locations for cameras. And of course, that's going to come down to, you know, we might have to cross out some of those locations due to cost. But that also included two license plate readers, but that'll be mounted at each bridge. It's expensive. It is. But I think it's well worth it in the end.
And I guess the only other item involving the police chief is that he's notified us that he plans to step up plainclothes patrols on the beach earlier in the summer than he did this past year to try to monitor and prevent excessive drinking on the beach or rowdy behavior on the beach.
Yes, sir.
So. Any questions? There he is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Captain Basaka?
Good afternoon. I don't have that much to report this time of the year. The headquarters has cleaned up, and the equipment has been stored and secured and everything for the winter. One topic I wanted to just talk about briefly because the time of the year just passed is the post-Labor Day lifeguarding. I think it's important. We try to stay there. This year, we stayed continuously through the weekend after Labor Day, and then we had basically no one available. And then we reopened the following weekend, which I think was around the 16th. And then at that point, we really just don't have people available. Every town seems to do something different. Some of the towns in this county, they unplug the phone Labor Day at 5:00. Others try and keep a stand or two out until the beginning of October. And it seems like a lot, people go to the beach more now after Labor Day than they used to. I mean, even if it were sunny this weekend and warm, it would be crowded, and the ocean's still warm. So we do everything we can to keep it open for people, at least to have a few guards around to respond if something happens. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Jill, can you give us a little update on the beach patrol tentative plans for the building, new building?
Absolutely. The existing building assessment phase should be completed by year-end by mark. The second phase, which would be considered the concept design phase, will be included in the 2019 capital. This phase should take between one and two months to complete. The third phase would be the design phase, which would be also included in the 2019 capital budget, and that should take between eight and 10 months to complete. Then the final phase, the construction, would have to be put into the 2020 budget, and it's anticipated that that could take about six months for construction on that one, so.
Thank you.
Okay. There's hope.
So summer of 2020 or 21?
Providing council gives the funding, the construction could begin in 2020 and could be finished in 2020. Depending on when the construction actually starts. At the latest completion by 2021.
Yeah, that seems... Okay.
Thanks, Sandy. Appreciate it. OEM?
Good afternoon. Well, after a very quiet start to the 2018 Atlantic hurricane season, things really did light up in September, and we were affected by three storms, Gordon, Florence, and most recently, Michael. Oddly enough, Gordon, Tropical Storm Gordon, was the one that seemed to affect us the most. It just created a long onshore flow for us during a new moon. So we did, I believe it was September 9th, we saw some widespread minor high or high moderate low major flooding. We didn't have any damage as a result of it, fortunately, but it was a great opportunity. I was out and about about 11:00 at night with some of the business owners in the 9500 block of Third Avenue where we had installed those barricades, and was able to actually see firsthand, the water was literally lapping at the thresholds of these businesses, and because we were able to prevent traffic from going through there, there weren't any issues. Had just a single car gone through there, it would have pushed six inches of water into those businesses. So it was nice to actually see firsthand with the business owners who were down there, their effectiveness. So that was a good thing. There's about six weeks left in the hurricane season, so we'll be keeping an eye on things, but we're definitely well past the peak of the season. The, all of our grant programs are moving forward. Jonas and the 2017 reapplication, we're still waiting to get final word on that. And that's all that I have.
That signage, I talked to JT before the meeting, that signage, just so you know that we deploy from 96th Street North on Third Avenue. We have it also deployed now 96th Street South. So it's used in both directions.
And it's good to know, too, Mr. Parsak, that we are, they won't be deployed simultaneously. The 9500 block does sit much lower than the one above it, so during this event, we didn't have to have them put up in front of the reeds in that area because it wasn't as flooded as bad as it was in the other area.
Which is a nice segue into, we also talked about the fact that all of us in this room probably know where the high points on the island are, and most of our summer visitors probably do not. So when they get a warning to move their car to higher ground, they're not really sure where that is, and a lot of them assume it's not at the beach. They assume that the beach floods as opposed to the bay. So we talked about, and I think we're going to do something as far as identifying the high spots on the island so that summer visitors will know where they should move vehicles should they need to. So that's in the works as well.
Yeah, we're in the process of creating a map that can be posted on our website and sent out that would tell visitors where they should go depending on the level of flooding.
I think that concludes public safety unless there's any questions.
I just have two things to add.
Sure.
Thank you.
A little bit more information on the police expansion. I had asked the engineer to give us an update. Some of it, it will be a repeat, but the plumbing and electrical is considered 95% complete. The wall priming and painting is at 100%. The ceiling tiles and light fixtures are at 100%. Gutters and downspouts are at 95% complete. The hanging of the interior doors is 100%. The HVAC control wiring is at 95%. The low voltage wiring, cable, and alarms are at 95% completion. The key meeting was held today. The resilient flooring installation is currently underway. The concrete driveways and sidewalks will be completed by the 19th, and the communication coordinating, coordination meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. The millwork is currently being fabricated, and the overhead doors for the Sallyport have been ordered, and there's an anticipated delivery of four to five weeks. The updated construction schedule calls for the expansion to be completed and have a certificate of occupancy by December the 12th of this year. The relocation of the equipment furniture from the existing station to the new station needs to be completed in two weeks, as stated in the original scope of work. And the completion date of the renovations to the existing building and issuance of certificate occupancy is still scheduled for March 6th of 2019. I'm moving along. And then the only other thing I had was I just wanted to advise council that yesterday, the annual recertification for the community rating system was filed with the insurance agency as required, and that I did send to all of council the progress report, which is a part of the requirement on the hazard mitigation initiatives. And we have sent this to all the media outlets and have posted on our website. If anyone has any questions, you can ask me at any time on that. And that's all I have for public safety.
Okay, recreation and tourism?
Well, as everyone knows, we are still suffering from the void that was created when we lost Miranda Dukah. Two weeks ago, we reviewed, the committee reviewed, the applicants for both recreation and tourism. And next week, the interviews for tourism will take place on both Tuesday and Thursday. And I assume that recreation will follow shortly thereafter. So while we are looking for a replacement for Miranda, if that's at all possible, Jill has a few things that have been going on in her office and with Kim's assistance for the upcoming holiday weekend in November.
Okay, yeah, I'll give you an update on the holiday weekend and a few other things. As Mantura mentioned, we will be holding our interviews next week for the tourism position, and I'm hopeful that we'll have somebody on board early November. That's my goal. And then as we go through the application for the recreation director, I'm hoping to have those interviews in the early part of November. I just wanted to do a reminder of what the current recreation schedule is. The Tuesdays, they have the low-fit cardio for seniors. Wednesdays is the bridge and card games, and that's actually held at the Legion Post. And then from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Wednesdays is line dancing. And Thursdays, it's low-sit cardio again for seniors. Fridays, you have the Zumba Gold and the Mahjong and other card games. And those things continue at the rec. Just a reminder that on Saturday, October 27th, is the Kids Harvest Festival in the downtown shopping district, and that's from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. There will be free hay rides courtesy of Public Works, and there will be fall crafts and other fun activities, and trick-or-treating in the shops and businesses. And then Wednesday, October 31st, is the seven-mile trick-or-treating. We have posted online in Stone Harbor and in Avalon for people to register if they are going to be handing out candy to the children. The recreation department right now is receiving, actually, the emails actually come to me, and then I'm forwarding them to recreation so they're aware of who is registering. And so far, we have 12 registered from Stone Harbor and then 10 from Avalon. We will be sending out another notice the end of this week, just reminding people to register for this. And then Tim Gear will be going and personally delivering them to the property owners that will be participating. So this, again, will be a reminder to anyone that's watching this that if you have not gone online and registered, please do so. Then going to Island Holiday, which November 23rd and the 24th. The theme for this year is White Christmas. The registration for the parade and the downtown dash are online at the Stone Harbor Recreation website. We currently have 10 registrations for the parade on file, and we did send out on October 2nd invitations to all the past participants. Currently working on the Island Holiday advertising. All the entertainment from 2017 have been rebooked, including the carousel, and Kim is currently reaching out to local organizations for their participation. We've asked the Chamber to handle the scavenger hunt for us this year with the Borough buying the prizes, and we're currently getting pricing and draft designs on what that actual prize will be. The pet parade has been scheduled. Santa will be flying in special to participate in the parade again this year. The beach tags will be available for purchase starting Friday, and Saturday and Sunday of Island Holiday Weekend. New this year will be a limited edition sets of the holiday and the regular seasonal tag. Details and the reveal of the holiday tag will be happening soon. Stay tuned. The Recreation and Tourism Committee will be meeting tomorrow morning to go over in more depth the details of the weekend events. And then on Thursday, the Mayor, Mantura, Kim and I will be meeting to go over what has been finalized so far, and then meet with the sound vendor to finalize where the staging will be. This report is short and summary and does not even begin to show how much work has been done by Ken Stevenson to get us to this point. After Miranda left, she literally took Miranda's book from last year and ran with it. I just have to say a heartfelt thank you to her for doing such a wonderful job and for putting up with my endless, "Well, what if we did this instead?" So thank you. I also want to acknowledge Tim Gear and Shelley Mills for holding down the fort at the recreation building. Tim's been busy getting the fields and equipment winterized while Shelley has been keeping the building running and collecting the addresses for trick-or-treating. And that's it.
Can I, you know, I would like to take this opportunity to cast my vote that we have the reviewing stand for the Christmas parade back on 96th Street. I mean, I think it, I think it was, it worked fine last year, and it's not, I'm not knocking the reeds. I think the reeds is a great place, but I think the majority of attendees expect it to be on 96th Street, you know, and to kind of peter out once we go around the corner there. So I think if we went back to 96th Street, it would be appreciated.
And we did already, what, start discussing like a week ago?
Yes.
Or so, saying that it would be going back.
Oh, good.
At the meeting, at our last recreation and tourism meeting, we brought up that exact fact that a lot of people were very concerned, not just us, but people in the community asked that we return things to the way that they were because there were so many gaps last year that they feel that having the stage down on 96th Street would have alleviated some of that issue. So we are going to do that.
The only thing that I see is somewhat just like, I guess cumbersome, for lack of a better word, is commentary to no one. But it is what it is. You know what I mean? You're doing a commentary and you're introducing who's there, and it's the end.
But it's the most crowded.
Right. You know what I'm, no, that's all I'm saying. That's why I was trying to figure out a way where we could, people know what's happening, and it's gone. Like, there used to be a time where there was awards, and you would go past the reviewing stand, and there you would, so you're coming by and you're saying, "Here comes Armah Fire Company," and they're established, and they do blah, 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 but it's over. That, you know, I mean, that's the only thing that I thought was just ever so, it's just ever so slight, so we just cut down on the, we'll just say, "Thank you." We'll just say, "No," because it's over. It's gone. We did do that last year. We had more speakers the whole way, but those, they don't know who's coming. It's over. It has passed them, so what they'd be hearing is, what you're announcing is long gone. That's what I mean, is how it gets, so we'll just cut down on the commentary and just do a "thank you" as they come by, just a thanks for, you know what I mean? So it actually will be quicker like that.
It felt a little strange walking up and making a circle and going back. It just didn't flow. Sometimes, change is good, but sometimes you need to go back to the old way.
A special thank you to each one, I think.
Right, rather than any kind of extended, and that's where I was going to, you know, even with, and I know that we'll be talking about it on Thursday, but the involvement of Nick Pittman will not need to be as much because all of that's going to be scaled back. So it should be cheaper.
One other thing, a report from Mark DeBlasi on our support building, the Rec Center.
Sure. So so far, the project is on schedule. The contractor has completed the concrete footings, and he's currently working on the block. So so far, so good. We're also working with the contractor to help facilitate building permits and any kind of submittals that are coming through our office. So so far, so good at this point.
Thank you, Mark. And that concludes our report.
And just a quick shout-out to Public Works for the job they did preparing for our bonfire Saturday night. We probably had close to 200 people throughout that three-and-a-half-hour period, four-hour period. It was amazing turnout, and they did a really good job with how it was set up, and we got really good feedback, and it was, it was a great event. It was beautiful night. It was just, it was perfect. So thank you, Grant, for shifting gears quickly, and Craig Reeves, it was, it really went well. Natural Resources. Natural Resources. Lenore?
Good afternoon, everyone. Short report for you, yay. The Bird Sanctuary, things are moving along well there. We're in winter maintenance kind of mood in several projects. Holly Path was opened on October 1st to the visitors following trail maintenance that was done there. This is a part of the seasonal closure that we have observed to help wildlife usage in the area. We're working again with New Jersey DEP, the Clean Shores Program. They'll be out at the sanctuary in November, coordinated with Public Works to continue to work on some of the vegetation management as part of our long plan there. So they'll be back. We had a little bit of a gap with them when a lot of the folks in that program retired, and it was kind of in flux, and then new people came in, so getting that reestablished was, was great. And then we continue to work on managing invasive plants in the Meadow area in combination with Public Works folks. There was some work with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and also we have a great volunteer on the Bird Sanctuary Committee that rolls up his sleeves and gets out there and helps work on that. So that's been really great. We reported on new trail signage that was designed by the Bird Sanctuary Committee. It was installed by Public Works. We're under, working on the next round of replacement signage, and this will be for the larger signs that are in the area around the pump house and EGRID Espy. Those will be designed and ordered. Those will be designed and ordered in the fall for spring install. The Bird Sanctuary Committee met a couple of weeks ago now and looked at their work plan for next year. They're working on budgeting to get some budget requests in. They're also considering a management strategy for the phragmities that's kind of aggressively moving into the marshes at the sanctuary. These were being actively managed five or six years ago now under part of the original permitting that was done to refurbish the sanctuary. When they put in the new flowpipes and all that in there, there was a, part of that mitigation involved managing the phragmities. When that project ended, I guess about four years ago now, the permits expired on any of that management and maintenance, so they've kind of just been left. Fish and Wildlife worked on it for a couple of years, kind of maintain it, and since then, it's kind of stopped happening, and we are seeing quite a bit of expansion of phragmities in there. So, the committee plans to come forward with a management strategy that's going to involve some assessments that are going to need to be done by consultants, and then we'll kind of make some recommendations to Natural Resources Committee and see where we need to go from there and what's feasible at that. But I think it is probably time, if you've driven by there recently, you can sort of, you really can't see into the marshes anymore with the phragmities moving up in there. So, it's a project the Sanctuary Committee is starting to work on. In addition, there was a discussion at the last Sanctuary Committee meeting on considering an educational program and establishing a do-not-plant list for the borough that includes plants that are harmful to natural resources in the borough. There are several plants that come to mind that are still being actively planted by folks that are escaping into the sanctuary, and just, so we have people planting it in one place, and then we spend a lot of time and effort trying to get it out of the sanctuary, on the other hand. So, there's going to be some work put forth there to make some recommendations on that front through, from the Bird Sanctuary Committee up to Natural Resources. So, it sounds like, these are actually fairly big projects to get this undertaken in a, in a common sense way that can be applied. The Beach Sweep is this Saturday. It's being coordinated by the Stone Harbor POA, the Wetlands Institute, and the Borough. Public Works is coordinating some of that. They'll be meeting at 95th Street Beach at 9:00 a.m., if anyone wants to get out and see what's happening down on the beach. Few storms, there's probably some good stuff up in the, in the dunes, the only time we are allowed to get in the dunes and clean that out. And then, finally, just a comment about coastal resilience. I did see your report that came out yesterday on the hazard mitigation work. The state of New Jersey is really ramping up what they are doing in the way of coastal resilience. The state is undertaking an effort to create a coastal resilience plan for the state. They're on a, actually, a fairly rapid timeline. There was a two-day conference last week trying to plan that. The plan is looking at natural resources, economic, social infrastructure, really across the board. It's, the plan is to identify gaps in knowledge and weaknesses that need to be addressed, and their goal, if they can achieve it, is to establish a consistent vision for the coastal zone and identify resiliency strategies and project types, right down in the ground, project types that can be implemented in the near term, including decision support tools that can be used by local municipalities to enhance their adaptation. The timeline is short to get it done. There are a series of work teams, it's a, and I will be on the plan development team looking at natural resources, and I hope to bring back some ideas to the planning process here for the island and other considerations, and taking information I have back to that process. So, it's, it's kind of an interesting time. There are also a series of projects that are being planned to be implemented in the area. You're all already aware that the area around Stone Harbor and Avalon is already becoming a, as a pilot area for Liverland Laboratory to try to look at some of these resiliency projects between the Avalon Beneficial Reuse Site and the work at Ring Island. There's some conversations about some additional ones, and if those were to come to fruition effectively, the Stone Harbor Avalon Wetland Area is, is a target area for what they're calling nature, natural and nature-based solutions for resiliency. So, you're kind of, in an exciting way, sitting at a really important place that's attracting attention, certainly at the state level and regionally and beyond. So, it's, it's an interesting time. I do applaud the work you're doing. I think, of course, there's, you know I'm going to say there's more to be done through the flood mitigation committee, but, but good work for starting to work on that. That's what I have.
Any questions, Lenore?
Anything else?
Thank you, Lenore.
And all I have is that we do have a resolution on our, on our agenda tonight to extend our professional service contract that we have with Cowie, and that is sort of at the recommendation of administration and our solicitor. And do you have anything, Jill?
No, other than our discussion, we brought it back to discuss the amendments that we wanted to do for ordinance 1524 for the plastic bags.
Right.
We had talked about it before, but we thought it was important to come back, make sure that everyone understood what we were going to do, and then the goal would be to bring that forward at the next council, council meeting as an amendment. To, to kind of recap it, we wanted to amend the reusable carry bag. To read means a carry-out, carry-out bag that is specifically designed and manufactured for multiple reuse and meets the following criteria. One, displays in a highly visible manner on the bag exterior, language describing the bag's ability, ability to be reused and recycled. Two, has a handle. Three, is constructed out of any of the following materials, which would be A, cloth, other washable fabric, or other durable materials, whether woven or non-woven, or B, 100% recycled pet plastic and recyclable. C, not a pet, but P E T. C has a minimum lifetime of 125 uses, which for purposes of this subsection means the capability of carrying a minimum of 22 pounds 125 times over a distance of at least 175 feet. Then the other amendment would be under 19.02(c) regarding the definition of acceptable paper bag for single use. Change the recycled content percentage to 80%. And these changes that we had mentioned before would be consistent with the ordinance that Avalon has adopted. So, I just wanted to, again, bring that back, make sure everybody was clear on that. If you had any other questions, any other suggestions or issues.
How do you prove C?
How do you prove C?
Is it the construction of anything of the reusable bags? And actually, the only change in that section was in line B. The rest of it was already in the ordinance.
Yeah. So, how does one prove C?
It was related to the mill plastic, so it tested and approved for reuse. And the only change in the bottom one was to take it from 40% recycled content to 80%.
Eighty.
So, there were just minor changes.
Judy, did you want to report on the short meeting with the chamber?
I did not attend the chamber meeting.
The one on the plastic bags?
Oh, gosh, it seems like it was so long ago.
It was.
All right, when was that now? That was the last, oh, man, how long? Seems like it was a lifetime ago. So, what did we do? I told everyone what we were doing. The meeting was coming up, and we were meeting with members of the Surf Rider Foundation. We were meeting with members of Bandana's Restaurant, who is an ocean-certified restaurant, and we were meeting with a paper, I can't remember the name of the company, but it's a distributor out of Vineland, what was the name?
South Jersey.
South Jersey Paper Products. All those professionals were there, as well as Dr. Tedesco was there. A lot of council was there, council members attended, and it was a general, basically, a networking event for the chamber members to get in the same room with organizations who have already implemented some of these things in the restaurant and the paper products to just so, they, this individual was saying that there is things available that they can use, that restaurants can use options. Bandana's produced some of the takeout things that they're already using, and it was a very good turnout. And from there, somewhere, my goal at the time was just to facilitate some networking and get the conversation going because they have to comply with the ordinance. So, it got it going and got conversations going. People met, they were in the same room at the same time, and they got the same message, and it went well.
And we did provide them with the changes that we were...
They were made aware that the changes, these changes were coming, that they were not in the ordinance yet, but they were going to be introduced, and that change was going to come, and why we had held off on the changes initially, waiting to see what the state was going to do. We're not wanting to wait and see what the state was going to do. We wanted to get this passed. But again, it was well-attended, lots of members from the chamber were there, good questions, good networking event, and we're just moving forward. Anything more, Natural Resources? That's it. We got lots of time.
Yes, we do.
And we don't have a closed session on the agenda, so we will just, if anybody has any items of discussion they want to bring up at this time, use the time on any of these, of these three? No? Okay. So, we'll have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned till 4:30 p.m., and we'll start the council meeting at that time.